All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first Planning Commission meeting of 2023. If you have not signed up to speak and would like to, there is a sign up sheet in the back of the room. Just put your name and credentials, so to speak, and we'll get you called up. I'll let Vice Chair McConnell go ahead and call the meeting's order.
Revit, a brief period of time to mute the mics on our screens. Okay, I think that did it. So, good evening and welcome to the February 14th, 2023, meeting of the City of Westminster Planning Commission. Will Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Mayo is present. Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter is present. Commissioner Calling.
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter, excuse me, Calling is present. Vice Chair McConnell.
Present.
Vice Chair McConnell is present. Chairperson Bossert.
Excuse.
Chairperson Bossert is excused. Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn is present. Commissioner Tomacek.
Present.
Commissioner Tomacek is present. Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Commissioner Torres is present. Commissioner Jeong.
Excused.
Commissioner Jeong is excused. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have a quorum present tonight, and we have seven members here, so everyone here will be voting. Okay, first item for tonight is consideration of minutes from preceding meeting. Calling for a motion and a second to approve the prior meeting minutes dated November 8th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Calling.
Second.
Okay, thank you. May we have the vote, please?
All in favor of approving the minutes from November 8th, 2022, please respond with "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
All of those not in favor, please respond with "nay." Vote is complete.
The motion passes for the minutes from the preceding meeting. Two items on the agenda for this evening. The election of a chair and vice chair to the Planning Commission, followed by a public hearing and recommendation on the revised 2040 comprehensive plan. Tonight's first agenda item is 3A, election of a chair and vice chair to the City of Westminster's Planning Commission. I'd like to ask the commission for nominations. Would do them separately, chair and then vice chair? Okay, but accepting nominations for chair?
I nominate Chairman Bossert for chair.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Calling.
I would also like to second the nomination of Chairman Jim Bossert for another term.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Any other nominations for chair? Any final comments or questions? On the motion? Okay, Secretary, may we please have a roll call vote on the nomination of Jim Bossert for chair?
Vice Chair McConnell, if I may suggest, since there are no other nominations, Chair Bossert could be elected by acclamation. So you just need to pronounce that.
Okay, thank you. Since there are no additional nominations for the chair, I'd like to go ahead and confirm Commissioner Bossert as chair for the next term. Okay, next up would be accepting nominations for Vice Chair Planning Commission. Have any nominations, please? Commissioner Carpenter.
Yeah, I nominate Vice Chair McConnell to continue as vice chair.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Any other nominations, final comments? Okay, let's call, I call the questions, Secretary. Let's call the vote, please. Well, wait a minute, we just went through this, didn't we? All right. Since there are no other nominations, I'd like to go ahead and confirm Vice Chair McConnell has vice chair for the next term. Okay, so tonight's second and final agenda item is 3B, a public hearing and recommendation on the revised 2040 comprehensive plan. Now hereby, I open the public hearing for and public hearing and recommendation on the revised 2040 comprehensive plan. Andrew Spurgeon, are you prepared to begin your presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair McConnell. Planning Commissioners, I'm Andrew Spurgeon, long range planner in the city's community development department. Most of you probably recall that we were here before you on September 14th, 2021, with an earlier version of this plan. This body supported that plan in a 5-2 vote. We subsequently went to the city council in October 2021, and at that time, the plan was not approved in a 3-3 vote. Since the current city council came into office November 2021, staff has engaged in a series of discussions with council to really understand their feelings and how we can improve alignment between the proposed 2040 plan and the updated city vision. And so the revised plan coming out of those conversations is what we've brought before you tonight. After my presentation, the commission will be holding a legislative hearing, which is unlike most of your Planning Commission meetings, where you have a quasi judicial hearing. A quasi judicial is when you're looking at how a policy or city ordinance applies to a specific property for a specific project. Legislative hearing differs from that quasi judicial in that its purpose is to consider the appropriateness of citywide policy that will inform future decision making. So just to be mindful, there is not a specific development project before you tonight, although you may be hearing some interest from some of the speakers, in particular, potential projects in the community. The comprehensive plan itself, should it be approved, does not authorize any new development or supersede any requirements for rezoning, PDPs, ODPs, those more nuts and bolts thing that you typically see in Planning Commission meetings. And then after conclusion of the public hearing, you'll be asked to make a recommendation to city council. You may recommend approval of the plan, you may recommend potentially amendments, things you'd like to see incorporated, or you may recommend of the plan. This is nice being able to drive myself and not have to do that next slide, please, thing. Always so awkward. The agenda memo and attachments are entered into the public record. This legislative public hearing has been noticed as required by Westminster Municipal Code 1132B. It is not a requirement, but I would note that this was advertised on the city's website in three places on the calendar of events, on the comprehensive plan page and on the Planning Commission page. It was in the Westy online newsletter, and it was put out on Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. This slide sort of illustrates where we came from, and you all saw this before. This slide illustrates some of that background in terms of the analysis and outreach that led to formation of the plan. With conclusion of public engagement, we began developing a plan early in 2020, and I actually had an April 2020 date to go to city council, and the world changed before our eyes in early 2020 COVID hit. So we slowed down work on the plan, allowing city council and city leadership to focus on those immediate pandemic-related response considerations and sort of revisit the plan during that time. It's noteworthy also that the city's vision statement changed with removal of the next urban center phrase, and we've really had the opportunity, since the new city council came into office, to understand what do they think that means, and how can we better align the 2040 plan with the vision and influence the future physical planning of the city. This slide shows the organization of the plan's policy chapters. Each chapter identifies a series of goals and then policies to realize the goals, with land use just being one policy within the overall framework relative to considerations for housing, economic resiliency, resource management, and similar. Attachment 3 is a crosswalk with the sustainability plan, which is obviously separate, but it goes into topics that we do not address as deeply in the comprehensive plan, such as energy and water conservation, pollinator species, all kinds of interesting things that were decided by the work group. I believe Commissioner Tomacek represented the Commission on the Sustainability Plan Task Force. So the two plans, there's similarity, but there's specialized topics that live in that other plan to the side. So direct feedback from city council is what informed the revised plan that is before you tonight. This approach really focused on vacant lands and the need for capacity for employment development, and to ensure that we're being responsive to industry trends in research and development, biotech and similar uses. This approach also supports a desire for housing formats that would lend themselves to home ownership and curtailing multifamily development and reducing citywide anticipated water demand. Finally, the plan has been reworked to improve readability, remove irrelevant or distracting content, and really shorten the document into something that's a little more concise. Some of the changes that we'll be presenting here tonight, this really is a significant departure from the three prior comprehensive plans for the city, and so that's what I'll be walking us through here. So in response to the interest of city council in taking the plan in a new direction, staff collaborated on how can we best fulfill that intent. The first was creation of an interactive online water supply planning tool that would allow staff and city council to understand the different variables, different inputs and assumptions, and I'll be demonstrating that on the next slide. The community development staff worked with our partners in the economic development department, really to look at the remaining land inventory, which you can see in the image on the right of that slide, and what are the sites that would be good candidates for employment development in consideration of their size, their location, access, and proximity to related activities. The staff also revisited some of the existing developed sites in Westminster that prior land use planning in the city had identified, in some cases, for density increases, and we identified where it might be possible to walk some of those back to support a more suburban development pattern. Staff's alternative approach was presented to city council in a study session on December 5th, and through the discussion, some additional updates were identified, but overall, we felt like there was general support for this direction, and that's why we brought it before you here tonight. It is not actually legally required, but staff did reach out to the property owners that were impacted by the proposed changes. One of the chief concerns of city council when they came into office, and most of you are aware of this, you've been part of various community conversations, was water supply, the cost of service, and the relationship between land use and water supply in the interest of ensuring a safe and reliable water supply into the future. So staff developed an interactive water supply planning tool to help model the relationship of water supply and land use and the related considerations for conservation. This interactive tool was designed to allow individual counselors could adjust this themselves and see results in real time. So the basic steps are first to enter a water use scenario. There's a pull down menu, and you can pull from different scenarios. And then the second step is to actually pick a land use scenario. And again, there's a pull down menu with different land use you can pull from. And then the second row is the ability to pick a whole different scenario of conservation assumptions and land use assumptions, and you can compare the outputs from those. The third, there's an option for risk tolerance. This is a slider you can move across. Staff actually uses 0% risk. We plan for 0% risk, but that slider is available should one choose to accept a degree of risk with the assumptions. We're aware of another community in the area, I won't say which one, but another community area, they've chosen as a policy to accept 50% risk that they will not have enough water. That's not the Westminster way. We don't do that. Another option is whether or not you want to maintain the drought management plan, or you can click that button and actually deactivate the drought management plan. The middle tabs actually allow assessments to individual sites. If you want to, say, take 25 acres of multifamily and change it to commercial, you can do those additional edits in those middle tabs there. And then after you do all that, then it plots out these results into the bar charts, as shown, and you can keep going back and changing steps one and two, or really all the steps, and watch those bar charts move in real time. So we're hoping that helps build some confidence and some understanding of our water supply and how that's been done. The discussions between the community development staff and the economic development staff resulted in this alternative approach for the remaining vacant lands, again, focusing on further employment development and reducing higher density multifamily and mixed use format. Measured by land area, the greatest impact of the alternative proposal is the increase in employment lands and the significant reduction in mixed use activity center, which is the highest water-using land use type. These discussions also gave our staff some time to rethink some of the city-owned properties, and in turn, we actually ratcheted some of these back down to public quasi-public, so there wouldn't be some type of development getting snuck through or something. Leaving them public quasi-public gives the opportunity that when there's potentially a proposal, we could come back through a complaint amendment and have a more robust laid use conversation at that time. So looking just at this aspect, this is the vacant land, going with the revised proposal reduces citywide water demand by 222 acre feet. Using the median value for the business-as-usual scenario. And again, those changes are calculated side by side using that interactive tool that I just walked you through. Based on the nature of city council comments, staff also presented an additional option for their consideration on December 5th, which addresses locations where higher density mixed use and multifamily development could occur within existing developed properties. Mostly, those are commercial properties, such as what you've seen happen more recently at Brook Hill or the Promenade, where multifamily has popped up in those commercial settings. City council did indicate they wanted to include this add-on when we had the study session on December 5th. These mixed use sites were generally carryovers from the prior 2013 comprehensive plan. That plan promoted mixed use development as a strategy to support struggling retail areas looking into the future. However, we know that many of these locations are functioning retail centers with no known immediate plans to redevelop, and the mixed use designation would have allowed higher density multifamily development, and so that might conflict with some of the concerns we heard from city council about a more balanced housing approach and reducing water demand through the land use element of the comprehensive plan. So some of these sites may still have some merit for future redevelopment, but removing them from the plan really gives that opportunity for future review on a case-by-case basis, paired up with a rezoning and PDP, to have a further check of vision alignment, the opportunity to re-review water supply impacts, and importantly, providing that forum for residents around the location to be involved with the decision-making for the land uses for that site. So changing course on the mixed use sites potentially reduces water demand by an additional 285 acre feet on top of the 222 from the vacant land, so that's a running tally here of 507 acre feet combined. Companion to this proposal is to walk back, to walk back the density in the mixed use center, which currently has unlimited density, to 36 units per acre. The unlimited density has made it difficult to adequately plan for water supply and infrastructure while maintaining the ability for future projects to meet code requirements in the process, so that is included in the recommendation. So looking at, you know, how these things all come together, the land use changes resulting from the revised approach are applied to 27 different locations, about 475 acres of land. Land use changes from the prior draft that were maintained are additional 106 acre feet of reduced water demand, so cumulatively, that adds up to 613 acre feet of potential reduction in water demand. The citywide distribution of land uses is shown in the pie chart. Forty percent of the city's land area would be protected as open space, parks, and golf courses. This is a lot higher than some of the comments in the packet. We had citizens saying we should aim for 30%. Well, we're going to go with 40% in this plan. Low-density residential uses are the second greatest share, that's roughly 29% of the city's land area, and the smallest land area are those with the greatest densities, the mixed use center and the specific plan, which is just 2% of the city's land area. Overall, the plan seeks to preserve the suburban nature of the city with primarily lower-density development mixed with parks and other types of green spaces. This would also result in roughly 2,000 to 2,500 fewer housing units in the future, and that would likely reduce the future population between 5,000 and 6,000 people. Some of the more perfunctory stuff, we were challenged to shorten the document, so we did what we could. We reduced the length by a little more than half, going down to 154 pages from 318. Most of that got moved into a separate document, which is included as an attachment tonight. The focus and transitionary discussion in Chapter 8 has been more succinctly summarized into a more simplified now and vision discussion, and then new graphics to improve interpretation by the reader, and various formatting changes were also made to improve readability and interpretation of the document. Implementation of the plan require partnerships from throughout the city as well as external agencies. The implementation plan in Attachment 9 identifies over 100 items, and this slide lays out a few of those. Includes, you know, further housing policy development, we'll be doing a housing needs assessment this year to start that work. We know a lot of residents would like to see the Parks Recreation Libraries Plan get going, but that plan really needs to know the amount and locate the residential development established by the comprehensive plan to inform placement acquisition programming of Parks Recreation Library Services, as well as trail connections and that sort of thing. So we really need, we have kind of a chicken and egg thing, we need the comprehensive plan to come first. Not to mention that residential development is how the city collects public land dedication and the park development fees, so we need to have some understanding of what's in the pipeline if we're going to effectively plan and budget for our future park needs. The development is also a companion project to help implement the plan, for example, looking at how can we support the employment development, the R&amp;D biotech uses the council's identified. A biennial report is proposed to measure 32 quantitative indicators identified in Chapter 9 of the plan. This was proposed to be biennial, so we would have the benefit of the community survey, which is done every two years, and our city's budgeting process is every two years, so pairing up with those cycles. And then I would just note that having a formal implementation plan and a reporting system are things we don't have with our current comprehensive plan, so this will be a change. Looking at the criteria of approval that's established by municipal code, the first four criteria relate to the suitability of the planned content, and the last three criteria are relative to the planning process. Staff's analysis finds that the plan is generally in conformance with the criteria. The development of the plan has been correlated with other municipal planning activities like the transportation plan, the sustainability plan, and so forth. A coordinated community engagement program was critical to developing the plan that's provided in Attachment 4. There were a variety of end There were a variety of in-person activities and online activities that actually had touchpoints with about seventy-seven thousand residents. The plan is cognizant of the city's vision statement as it was revised in 2020 and then further revised in 2022, and expands upon those concepts through the different goals and policies. Every city department, frankly, at one point or another, had a hand in participating in development of the plan. As I mentioned, implementation will require partnerships with external entities, nonprofits, businesses, and of course, our, our residents. Examples of those may include the school districts, counties, utilities, and so forth. The plan was sent to twenty-six different referral agencies for review and comment. We, we incorporated those comments as appropriate. We recirculated it again in December in developing this final draft. And in the recirculation, we got additional feedback from CDOT and the Adams Twelve School District. With this slide, I will introduce two property-specific requests that were received in advance of the meeting tonight, and those are included in attach twelve. The first is a proposal for what we call the Han property along Westminster Boulevard, south of Big Dry Creek. The request that was submitted by several people was first to amend the land use map from staff's recommended employment flex to the employment office institutional campus designation, and second, to amend the text of the employment office institutional campus to allow a continuing care retirement community with allowance up to twenty-four units breaker of residential uses, and then some associated proposed definitions. Second request is a proposal for what we call the Northgate property, which is located southeast of Seventy-second Avenue and Federal Boulevard, to amend the land use map from the staff recommendation instead to residential medium-density and a one-acre commercial portion. I will let the speakers tonight elaborate on those requests. Our, based on the information that staff has been provided, we are not in support of the first request, since it doesn't appear to align with the vision laid out by city council to reduce high-density, encourage employment development, and reduce water use. And we would have potential concerns about the text change to other locations that have the employment office institutional designation. We are more supportive of the second request. It cites specifics, wouldn't impact others, and has a fairly minimal impact on density and water resources. And the residential medium-density format would not allow multifamily at that location, so would report, support the goal of homeownership. I would caution the commission again, a specific project is not before you tonight. So you, you should certainly listen to the speakers and weigh their opinions as you're deciding how to make your recommendation tonight, but do not have a specific plan or project before you on, on either one of these. Staff recommendation is that you do hold a public hearing, and then upon conclusion of the hearing, to recommend to city council to approve an ordinance to adopt the 2040 comprehensive plan as it's been revised. Staff's recommendation is based on the criteria set forth in Westminster municipal code that I walked through a few minutes ago. The planning commission, of course, has discretion to support staff recommendation, offer potential amendments to the plan, either the two specific property arrests before you tonight, or any other changes you would suggest would make for a better plan, or you may choose to recommend denial. The plan complements the city's vision for Westminster as a city of beautiful, safe, well-maintained neighborhoods and destinations with a vibrant, diverse economy, rich and resilient environment, and a strong sense of community and belonging, and meets all of those 2022 strategic plan goals. This concludes our presentations. I'm happy to accept any questions from the commission, either now or after the public hearing, whichever way you prefer to do that.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Put a lot of work into this. So at this point in time, I'd like to encourage questions, discussion, and comments from planning commission. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clarify, because I have questions, I have comments, and maybe this is a question for City Attorney Graham. Would it be better just to let the public hearing go, let them testify before I come with my laundry list of options?
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. I would suggest that if the commission has specific clarifying questions for Mr. Spurgeon or Mr. McConnell, that, that those could be asked at this time. Otherwise, I would hold discussion and other clarifying questions or other types of questions that you might have until after the public comment period.
Well, then I will hold. Thank you.
Anybody else? So Andrew, I do have, I do have one clarifying question about the, the water usage and the, the modeling tool that we use. Would that be the responsible of the planning department to work on, or would?
No, I have to give credit to our public works utilities department, the interim directors sitting in the back of the room, but their staff developed it. Obviously, it benefits the comprehensive plan, but.
Yeah, I assumed that, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. All right, I guess we'll be saving, saving a little bit till later, huh? Okay, so I want to go ahead and open the public testimony. Public test, there has been some public testimony received via email, and those have already been added to the public record, correct?
That is correct. You were also in a packet addendum today to approximately one-twenty-four of those emails.
Do we have any voicemails that need to be played today?
No voicemails this evening.
Okay. Okay, I also want to say that for those who wish to give comments, and if you signed up in advance of the meeting, we don't have anyone online wanting to participate, do we?
Correct, no online speakers, just in person.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna start the public hearing portion of, of the meeting, and I want to remind that if anyone here who's going to come up to speak would like you to keep it to five minutes if possible. Make it possible, please. Per speaker, so have your comments prepared. And if your comments have already been stated by another speaker, then please step forward to the podium and, and state that you're in agreement with the person who had been up there ahead of you. And last but not least, if there's any reason for applauding during the meeting, we, we ask that it should be refrained from at this point in time. Thanks. Okay, so we're all ready to open the testimony. Who's, who's up first?
So the first speaker we have this evening is Steve Montgomery. And just a reminder, for those of you that would like to speak when you approach the podium, to please make sure to speak very clearly into the microphone. We're only having one camera this evening, so we want you to speak very loudly, please, and state your name and your address for the record, please. For those in the audience, thank you for your patience. We have new audio equipment in this room, and it's, gotta love technology. You can't live with it, can't live without it, right? So we appreciate your patience while we try to diagnose the issue here.
Okay. You don't hear me okay? There we go. Good evening, members of Westminster Planning Commission. My name is Steve Montgomery, Erickson Senior Living, thirty-two, twenty-five, Mill Vista, Drive, Highlands Ranch, Colorado. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to come talk to you all about your 2040 comprehensive plan consideration. Erickson Senior Living is a national leader in the continuing care retirement industry around the country. We have more than twenty-one properties in eleven states around the country with a model that is focused on providing, and I apologize, this does not sound like working, but I'll keep going, with a focus on providing continuing care and the ability for seniors to age in place across the continuum of care from independent living through skilled nursing, assisted living, and memory care. And again, we appreciate the opportunity for you all to be here tonight. Understand that this is our request as a release of the Han property is request number one in your packet tonight. We'd also like to just briefly thank the city of Westminster for their time and patience over the last year. We've been under contract on this property since spring of last year, and appreciate the opportunity to work with staff, to try to see if there's an opportunity for this Erickson to be able to ultimately provide another community in the Denver metro area for Westminster seniors. So the focus of what we do, what Erickson is known for, is for really folks who have been living in this community for their lives, to be able to stay here, to be able to age in place, to be able to do so in a way that they're not a burden on their family, on the larger community. We have a very strong model that is healthcare-based. We'll hear from some of our other experts tonight as it relates to that. And it also provides other resources for seniors to remain active. One of the major concerns that we see with folks is staying in their homes after a certain time period in their age, where they are no longer out and being active in the community. We feel we have a model that addresses that, keeps seniors more active, hopefully leading longer and more productive lives. One of our, why are we here? Why are we interested in this area? You know, the demographics, what we've known, what we're calling the Silver Tsunami is happening in the north metro area of Denver. Next twenty years, so over, you know, twenty-five percent of the residents in this area are gonna be old, sixty years old, sixty years in age or older. And that population is gonna, you know, consume more and more resources in your area, and it's gonna, you know, create more demands for folks to be able to have a place to stay here, again, without being a burden on the local community. We also, you know, feel that with this type of housing proposal, that it does provide a range of options for folks to be able to age in place, to be able to stay in the community. And by doing so, it opens up a housing stock that they currently are occupying for families and other folks to be able to move into the community and take advantage of, you know, this wonderful community. We, we feel that this housing model, which we don't like to call it a housing model, we really focus on services for seniors. And so our goal is to really provide a setting where folks can age in place gracefully, healthfully, successfully, and the housing becomes just a necessary function of that, I guess, in a certain way. As we've also heard from Andrew in his presentation, we've understood in the focus in this area on water usage. We have feel, based on our experiences at other communities, that we do operate a very water-efficient model. Preliminary analysis that we have done here, and again, we've got some folks here tonight who can speak in more details to this, we feel that a proposal like this for this specific site could result in some significant savings, as you all have identified and targeted in, you know, the draft twenty-four comp plan. And then finally, in conclusion here, again, I would like, you know, again, very briefly, thank you all for your consideration of this, and the consideration of CCR use as a part of the Han property, and the language that we had submitted, seeking, you know, that is a part of the, the use potentially for this property. And I think those are my comments, and I didn't see the clock working over here either.
Our timer is also not working this evening, so we're, we're, we're having a track at ourselves, but you, you're almost on, so well done. Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Jared Carlin, Carlon, Carlin? I'll let you, I'll let you correct me up there.
Thank you, yeah, Carlin without.
Carlson without the S.
Commissioners, thank you very much for your time this evening. Jared Carlin, uh, Sidon, Donovan, Long Island Street, Denver. Um, as Steve said, I would like to thank you for your consideration of adding the CCRC or the continuing care retirement community to the office institutional campus definition that's in their proposed comp plan. I think it's gonna be great for the community and the Westminster regular to kind of go through that, why I feel that way. And it really fits in, if you look at the staff packet, within the employment office institutional campus definition, it really fits in. So such as, if you look at, there's talk about in the, what's been mentioned, there are medical facilities and clinics, Erickson will have those, supporting retail, Erickson will have those, and that, assisted living, skilled nursing, and care facilities, which is already in there, of course, as a part of the CCRC as well, rehabilitation centers, pharmacies, et cetera, all of which employ doctors, nurses, medical assistants, and other healthcare-related workers. And independent living is really the main thing being added. And independent living is really the main thing being added, but keep in mind, it's the independent living that eventually is supported by all the continuing care aspects that I just mentioned. Also, within the CCRC communities, they include stores, salons, restaurants, support offices, also consistent for both the comprehensive plan for employment office and institutional. So that being said, we believe that CCRC with independent living fits in really, really well with the current definition. And in addition, the CCRC on this particular site, in my opinion, is a professional land planner located along major roads like US 36, Westminster Boulevard, 104th. Makes a lot of sense, we'll point the same point. The site is close to the City Recreation Center, to the City Park, to hotels at the west end, retail, etc. And it's really a wonderful site for a continuing care community like this that can get the center of the community, or a center of the community. Regarding water, we've also done extensive research and planning regarding the potential water use. We're coming in slightly outside of the employment office and institutional campus water use, as Andrew mentioned, but we're coming in way less, actually, than the mixed-use activity center that was put back in for the past many years. And so we're going to be bringing in very zero landscaping, which we'll talk more about, that will be cutting edge, as well as big steps to limit domestic water use. Our water consultant that we're working with is here this evening if you have any detailed questions about water use. But water conservation is so, so important to us, I mean, what we're doing. Also, at a high level, this project could really help some of the real housing crisis that we're experiencing without actually building any homes or any housing, street housing units. The CCRC use would allow Westminster residents to move out of their existing homes while staying in the community and moving into a Westminster facility like this. And of course, that would open up those existing homes to other people to move in after they will move out. And then finally, as Andrew finished his presentation on the five strategic priorities, I feel like they fit so well with Erickson's continuing care retirement community model. They say, among other things, I'll paraphrase a little bit, but number one, to ensure that the Westminster community endures and thrives. And that's CCRC, just like in a nutshell. To ensure safety and the wellbeing throughout Westminster. Number three, to foster equitable opportunities that help residents feel at home and empowered to live their best lives. It's so well with the Erickson model. To incorporate a diverse range of amenities, a variety of amenities in a CCRC project like this for a high-quality life. And finally, to provide access to core services with the priority for sustainable water and mitigating traffic, which of course, this use on the CCRC would have less traffic burden on the roadways. So we really feel like it fits in with the four strategic priorities underlying the Erickson CCRC use. I'm going to wrap things up. As a long-term Westminster resident for over 20 years, I currently live in the Dry Creek corridor, just a mile or two away from this. I personally would love to know that there's a place like this nearby with extensive services and the continuing care that's offered. It's so needed in our city and the demand's only going to increase. So in, to wrap up, I would like to ask for your support to include Erickson's request for CCRC in the 2040 comp plan on the Han property. It fits in really well with the employment office institutional campus designation, providing a much-needed care, sustainable services, healthcare, and jobs in our wonderful city. So again, thank you for your time this evening. Hopefully, I can spend the last five minutes.
You're just a little over, but it's okay. Thank you. Next speaker, Kathy Dilger, Dilger? Sorry, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Westminster Planning Committee. My name is Kathy Dilger, and my address is 2908 West 11th Avenue Circle in Brumfield, West 11th Avenue Circle. Yes, that is correct, in Brumfield, Colorado. I am a neighbor to Westminster, and I frequent Westminster often. I like to shop at the Walnut Creek Hopping Area. We do restaurants there. My husband and I love to golf at the Highland Hills Golf Course. So it's like home as well as Brumfield. I've been an Erickson Living employee for 10 years, driving to Douglas County every day from Brumfield, so 45 miles one way. I've put on 200,000 miles on my car. And I'm here tonight to ask for your support for the Erickson Continuing Care Retirement Community in the Westminster, in the 2040 Westminster Comprehensive Plan. In my role at Erickson, I serve as the Associate Executive Director in the community. And so I oversee just under 1,000 employees on our campus. And we have everything from medical professionals, we have three physicians, two physician assistants, a host of medical assistants, care associates, PNA's, RNs, LPNs, maintenance staff, housekeepers, culinary team members. So a host of staff in our community who serve our seniors. Because we're a continuing care retirement community, and we're really comprehensive in our approach, we can offer a wide array of services to the residents that we serve, the seniors that choose to move into our community. And with that, we also have a number of those professionals, as I stated before. Erickson provides hundreds of jobs in each of our locations across the country. And within that, we offer lots of development opportunities and also partnership with local schools. It's really important for us to partner with local educational institutions to bring that new talent into our workforce. And so down south in Highlands Ranch, we work with the South Denver School of Nursing, Arapahoe Community College, and also Pima. Through those programs, we have seen a little more than 140 individuals who have come through our community in the last couple of years, training alongside our own staff. And then it also gives us an opportunity to hire those individuals into our team. We envision in Westminster, if we're able to do this project, to bring those same opportunities to the educational institutions here. We already have a letter of support from Front Range Community College and have had some meetings with them to talk about that. So training and education is really important to us. I also want to stress that our facilities provide more than just job training and workforce development. We want to hire those individuals. It's in our best interest to bring them on our team, to have them be a part of the community in Westminster. A unique thing about our community as well, or our organization, is that we allow staff 40 hours of volunteer time so they can give back to the community of Westminster around them as well by partnering with a not-for-profit. All these jobs contribute back to the Westminster community, whether people live in Westminster or not. They will shop in the area surrounding this community. They will eat at restaurants. So it will have an economic impact to Westminster. And while I've spoken about our employees and the workforce and the importance of training and partnering with educational institutions, I'd be remiss if I didn't speak about our resident population. In our community in South Denver, our residents have created 180 different clubs, all resident-driven, and many of them give back to the greater community in a variety of ways. Another thing that they have done in our community is they've supported a fundraising drive, raising over $400,000 in the last year to support ongoing education. We have usually high school students who work in our culinary program, supporting the waitstaff role in our community and all the restaurants on our campus on a night-over-night basis. And they are eligible through that fundraising for $8,000 of scholarship money. I think I'm close to time. I must be.
You read my eyes.
Okay. So while I may live in Brumfield, I would ask one more time that you support this project of the 2040 Westminster Comprehensive Plan and allow Erickson Living to consider coming into your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Huff? Is it Huff? Like the celebrities? Julianne and Derek is in it, Huff? Right. Thank you.
My name's Lisa Huff. I'm president of the Addison County Regional Economic partnership. I'm also a former resident of Westminster. I moved in 2020, so I think I was involved in the original comp plan because I've lived here for a while. It's a pretty active enough community. But when my husband and I decided to downsize, we had to find a new house somewhere else. But enough about me and where we live. I am part of ACREP, which is located right here in Westminster. ACREP is the nonprofit organization that brings together regional businesses with local governments to work together on creating economic opportunities and prosperity through innovation for the future of our whole region. We're based in Westminster at the former DeVry University Building, which is now the Community Reach Center. So our offices are over there at 1870 West 122nd Street in Westfield. So I come before you tonight on behalf of our Development Council. The Development Council of ACREP are made up of private and public nonprofit members of the community who convene on a monthly basis to direct the policy positions of our organization on local real estate and infrastructure developments. And we really do appreciate that we did have a presentation from Andrew on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan just a couple of weeks ago. And we appreciate the efforts of the city of Westminster to move forward on this comprehensive plan. But I'd like to touch on just three key areas of importance when considering the adoption of a plan for the next 20 years. If our greater metro Denver area has learned anything over the past 40 years, it is that diverse industries and a mix of land uses are key to our resiliency. It was essential that we expanded our economy from one based mainly on natural resources in the 1980s to having a variety of primary employers, from aerospace to healthcare to information technology. This is why our region bounces back quicker than any other regions in the nation that might have less, other regions that might have less broad assortment of industries. Having a variety of employers in multiple industry clusters gives a region economic resiliency. However, yet today, we are still recovering from 2020, 2021, and we're still not certain what our office and workplaces will look like in the future. Businesses are still working in hybrid or flex mode. Therefore, I would encourage the commission to adopt a plan that allows for balanced uses of land, sustainable design, and flexibility to meet future needs. Also, having a variety of employers means supporting local employees with different needs for transportation, housing, and local services. Workforce trends have demonstrated that employees now want to live closer to where they work, shop, and also they want to enjoy the amenities of their community. Therefore, they need a mix of housing options, from just starting out with their first apartment to housing a large family with nearby schools, to seniors that want to stay in the communities they know and love. However, in the current economy, we are no longer providing enough options to fill our community members' desires. ACREP supports many transit options and has championed several improvements on the region's network of roads and highways. We've also supported efforts to build more transit-oriented developments and supported innovative housing solutions as ways to provide more options. ACREP encourages the commission to take a very broad view of the options under the Comprehensive Plan for the next 20 years. Finally, ACREP shares your concerns and the city's concerns about limitations on our infrastructure and water. Building, updating, and improving infrastructure is key to serving the future needs of our communities. On March 2nd, ACREP will have a panel of experts discussing the water housing nexus. We believe there are ways to continue to meet the needs of our communities through sustainable water use. We see innovation around many water-dependent industries, options for commercial property standards, and tools to manage residential water use that we may need to consider for future sustainable communities. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening and stand available for questions afterwards.
Thank you. And I think someone's unmuted again. I'll try it again. Last on my list is Karen Clavety, sorry. And if anyone else would like to speak, when she's finished, just go ahead and raise your hand and come on up to the podium.
Hello, Karen Clavety, 9940 West Pitt Parkway, Westminster. Yeah, I guess it sounds good, Andrew. A little better than it was before. 40% open space? I'm trying to figure out, is that of total land? Or is that what that is? 40% open space in Westminster? That sounds pretty good. I am, I currently live in an apartment. I would love for my apartment to become a condo. The idea of having a bunch of single-family dwellings taking up space and then having direct yards and lots of concrete around them, I guess that's not my idea of like the rural, single-family dwelling kind of definition. So I, I know that was something that came down from, or apparently came down from the city council, but I do think that we need to maybe talk about using that as a little bit more concise with larger areas of open space as far as homeownership, rather than that there's additional single-family dwellings that take up a lot of space and a lot of roads and a lot of infrastructure. But, you know, the sound of the plan sounds pretty good, especially if there's biennial reviews and amendments. I mean, that sounds pretty good to me. So I, yeah, that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. I'll turn it over to you, Vice Chair McConnell.
Okay, I thank you, everyone who stepped forward to the podium to speak. At this point in time, I'd like to close the testimony part of the hearing and also ask for a motion at this point in time. Yeah, yeah, so this, but right, we have the motion first and then the questions and comments, correct? Commissioner Carpenter.
If I may, Vice Chairman. Because this is a legislative matter, so we can have a discussion before there's a motion and a second. Typically, when we do a quasi-judicial, we want to have the motion first, but in this particular instance, we can have the conversation first.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, that would be more appropriate at this point, I think. Well, first off, I just want to say I really appreciate the hard work that staff has come through. I was one of the two no votes previously, and this is night and day to what we saw before, I believe. It's, the presentation-wise, readability, the fact that it's half the size, all, I think, I think this is a good blueprint moving forward. So a couple of things, I was very, I've, I read the whole thing over the weekend. I marked up this. I'll try not to, I'll try to be brief for everybody's sake. First, I appreciate when we talk about Westminster supports a multi-modal transportation network, provides safe and well-connected transportation mobility choices to connect people. We added a section, so we make sure that we say it allows for safe official travel for drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders. That covers the whole universe of transportation. I'm very happy to see that. Next will be a question on, this would be, and if you're following along, I'm on page 10 of the plan, but this is, we're, it says if the city near it's built out, there'll be less opportunity to collect tap fees from new development. So, and then there's a sentence, "As Westminster transitions from this development-driven system to one of rate pairs contributing the bulk of revenue, financial challenges will be, need to reconcile to ensure reliability of essential infrastructure in future years." So Mike, that drew a question. So, Mike, that drew a question. How much of our current infrastructure maintenance and replacement is through tap fees versus our ratepayers?
I don't have that at my fingertips. I see Director Boarders walking in.
A microphone, yeah.
Thank you for that question. So, right now, as a first one comes to, we work in the $2 million range for tap fees. To put that into perspective, our operating budget is $30 million. So it does make up a piece. But our rate modeling effort through the council takes into account all of the upgrades for our infrastructure and balances that with affordability.
Okay, and tap fees and the water rates all end up in the same enterprise bucket of funds? And then it pushed out and you've taken this into account? Okay. That, that was that question. Let's see. The next, next on page 11, we say, "The city's residents are affected by increasing air pollution from vehicle emissions and other sources." Is air pollution actually increasing? Or is it just the standards are making the air pollution less? Because I know that cars are much more efficient now than they were even 10 years ago and everything else. I'm just wondering if, is, is pollution actually increasing? Or are we deep, or what? I just want a clarification.
Sure. So there was a greenhouse gas study done with sustainability plan. My recollection of that is that we're heavily impacted by sources from outside of Westminster. And they're diverse from, you know, the wildfire events. You know, unfortunately, things, you know, far, far away have impacted us. But other things like airport operations. And so it's a myriad of sources. But I, my understanding is there's, there's some locations that are showing increases from these external sources.
Okay. Got it. That was, that was just a question. So when we're talking about air quality on, on page 12, where we say air quality is enhanced by using multiple techniques, urban treat canopy, convenient multimodal transportation options, alternative fueling, infrastructure, and green building practices. One thing that's not mentioned in there is reducing congestion. Because congestion, especially currently with internal combustion engines, adds to ground-level ozone and stuff like that, which the more congestion, the more concentrated air quality degradation there. So I would recommend adding, reducing congestion in that spot. Or at least, or, or looking at that. That is an option.
Sure. Nobody likes sitting in traffic. I get you.
Yep. Yep, exactly. Exactly. Let's see. We're going to skip that one. Just a Scribner's thing. On, on all of the nice land use maps we have, we're showing Highway 128 as a United States highway, and it's a Colorado State highway. It shouldn't, it should have a different symbol than US 36 or I-25. Because right now, it's, that's, you know, since this is going to be years, I think we, you know, that's, it's an opportunity to kind of clean some of that up. Moving on, page 42, density and intensity. And this, this may be a recurring theme of my comments. We talk about accessory dwelling units permitted on single-family lots subject to applicable provisions of the Development Code and PUD for a given location. They should be considered accessory and not added number of units for maximum density. Now, a couple, a couple of questions there on the ADUs. Number one, I support in theory ADUs, for sure. But are we requiring them to have a separate tap of all of their utilities in order to do that? Or are they going to remain on the, on the primary tap that's going to fund, or that's going to service this line? Or the, the auxiliary rest?
Yeah, well, the short answer, and I don't mean for this to be a cop-out, the Development Code hasn't been updated to allow those. And so that's, that's on our list of things that would need to be addressed. Best practices are that you're on the same meter as the primary structure. So we'd, we'd probably consider that. But we'd probably also look at what some of the surrounding jurisdictions have done. You know, places that have done this for longer, what, what are the lessons learned?
Okay. Great. Because obviously, if they have to buy a new tap for each one of those, that's going to kill it right before it even starts.
Sure. Our tap fee structure, and Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we look at the number of bedrooms and fixtures and that sort of thing. And so this will just be, we're looking at it all, you know, one big house or two separate houses. So there, there will be a cost, but let's figure out what that is.
Got it. Okay. Next thing I saw was where we have, page 45, under land, land character types that we have potentially prohibited uses. My recommendation is that we, that the city council maybe take a look at what those are. I don't know if that's, if the, if it's an administrative thing where we're banning certain types of things, like banning video arcades or, and tattoo parlors, although we have one in the city. Gun shops, we don't have any in the city. Pool halls, I don't know that that's, dollar stores. We have dollar stores in there. So we have many things in here that we have in the city. So I'm not sure that we, I, I'm not sure if it's an administrative look or if it's a council look, but it seems like that list should be pruned.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, we, we did get a comment from someone else on that. And the short answer is, this is really something that's carried over from all the comprehensive plans. But potentially prohibited doesn't mean it's actually prohibited. It's just that it gives a little more scrutiny when we come before you with a PDP, ODP requesting one of these uses. But everybody still gets to come forward and request from you and city council.
Okay. Perfect. Answers that up. So next we get into the, some of the fun stuff, the, the different zoning categories. And where, I'm not exactly sure where we would put something, you know, kind of, kind of in pairing with the ADU discussion, tiny home discussion. Like, because, you know, that's, you know, as Ms. Clavity spoke of, you know, that's an alternative to having a, a giant house that's entirely, an entirely paved lot, where they have a little bit of, have a little bit more land and a little bit less living space for people who could downsize, like, like me who just has a dog and a cat. You know, I don't need 1,600 square feet all the time. So where have, have tiny homes been contemplated? And where would that fit in here? Medium density, suburban multifamily, mixed use? Or, I mean, commercial wouldn't be it, but I'm just looking at it.
Yeah, so we know, and this question came up actually at city council as well. So I appreciate the question. We, we would consider that just another type of a single-family detached residence. So it would be allowed, where we've allowed single-family, but the, the density would be the deciding factor. So it was the low density, then it would be the three and a half to five units per acre. If it was the medium density, it would be the eight to 12 units per acre. Or in the mixed-use neighborhood option, where you can go up to 18 units per acre. But we don't, we don't prohibit tiny homes. It would be treated just as a single family.
Okay. Yeah. Just seems like there'd be a better category with the potential for a smaller lot that would allow that too. And that's why I was thinking urban, I mean, urban multifamily doesn't really.
With that particular question, since we, we did hear this from council and some other, you know, side conversations, we're actually having a separate discussion. Our economic development staff has, they have the housing policy staff and looking at going out and visiting one of these and perhaps coming as a result of the housing needs assessment, coming back and relooking at some of our housing stuff.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. So, next go to the commercial mixed use. So, one, this is another recommendation here. So at the, the last sentence, "New audio or new auto-oriented uses and drive-throughs are not permitted when the mixed-use project includes residential uses." So you've just basically said you can't have a Starbucks here or a Ziggy's. Because, you know, yes, most of the uses are going to be walking, but Starbucks is closing most of their stores that don't have some sort of drive-through function, at least up in the north here. You know, maybe, maybe not on the 16th Street Mall or something like that. But that's, I, I think, maybe, maybe strict scrutiny or more, you know, or some, there could be a different way to put that other than a blanket prohibition, because there may be, maybe an opportunity for something in an urban environment that would allow that and, and do it. Because, you know, we, you know, people who live in urban environment eat fast food too.
Yeah, we, John and I just had a conversation about that, actually. This is a, that's a carryover provision from the existing comprehensive plan and the mixed use. But what, what this plan changes compared to our existing comprehensive plan, the existing comprehensive plan has the requirement they have vertically integrated commercial into a residential project, which is one of the reasons that, that concern is there for compatibility. And this commission has certainly seen several cases, I remember, where, where applicants didn't want to do the vertically integrated and they proposed comprehensive plan amendments just to do straight family. We've seen a few of those over the six years I've been with the city. What this comprehensive plan does, we do, we are providing the option for a horizontal mixed use. And so in discussion with John, we, we would see the intent as to keep the drive-through type of use out of the residential project. But if it was some separate standalone commercial building off to the side, that would be a different way of looking at it. So we'd look if it's, is it a use that happens to have a drive-through, you know, accessory to their primary function? That would be a different way of looking at it. So this is really intended for that vertically integrated type of.
Okay. Got it. Let's see. Just gonna keep on going here. Page 64 here. "We had, under 10.6, work with Adams County and/or Highland Hills Parks and Recreation District to identify potential park and recreation sites for unincorporated areas south of 92nd Avenue." I support that. But we, while there may not be that many now, we should also, we should include incorporated as well, because there could be an opportunity, you know, who knows? There might be an opportunity for some pocket parks or something in redevelopment of a closed commercial area or something like that as well. So I just, it, it feels to me like it's limiting it to, we have to go outside of the city in order to provide park space for our residents down there when there may be, there may be opportunities in redevelopments or other things. So that's, that would be my, my comment is not, not to limit it.
Maybe as, as, still is striking the four unincorporated areas, or just as identify sites south of 92nd Avenue.
Beautiful. All right. So we move on to the transportation section. I, under, on page 68, under protecting, under 3.3, we do mention the vision zero again. And I know I pretty vehemently spoke about that last time. I think vision zero is a buzzword that's, that's really impossible. You're not going, you're, the goal is always zero deaths. You're never going to get to zero deaths. And that is, that's usually a buzzword for road diets, additional congestion, and chain, you know, change of use and stuff like that. So I really, I really don't, really don't like that. And I'd recommend that to be council, maybe council will remove it, but I just, that would be my recommendation is to keep, you know, try to keep the buzzwords out and just, and deal with the plan as what so.
I think staff's perspective would be if we left it as the, as identified in the TMP, meaning as identified in the Transportation Mobility Plan, because that plan is standalone, speaks for itself.
Yeah.
And then we could not worry about the.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Yeah. Then, then we're not, then we're not reinventing the wheel here. And, yep, and kind of the same over on 6.1. Where we're coordinating with other agencies. You know, there are safe multimodal transportation network, I would also suggest, and I'm working to reduce congestion. Because if it's not in the plan, if we don't say we're trying, we would like to reduce congestion, then we're not, then it's never going to be done. Or, or we might prioritize something other, over a traffic improvement like that. So that, that's a thought there. All right. Economic resiliency. Under a balanced economy, 1.6, you know, "We're encouraging businesses and programs focused on renewable energy, water conservation, clean technology, waste reduction, recycling, in accordance with the Sustainability Plan policies," and all that. It's all great. It just seems like we should be encouraging all types of business growth. And it just felt, and, and I get you're trying to implement the, or refer to our sustainability plan, but, you know, from, you know, as somebody who works in the private sector, I think we encourage all types of business growth. We don't just, we call that out as a specific one, whereas kind of the rest of them are general encouragements of there. But then we're saying, "We want these specific industries here." That, that's kind of how it lands, at least.
Yeah, I see, I see your point. I, I think the intent is what you're saying, but I can see how the words could be construed to say, "We're only targeting those industries." Yeah, the, the intent is the programmatic side. And there was just a news release, you know, the city got some money from EPA to help people with their HVAC, and it's for all commercial accounts. So, yeah, the intent is all, and so you're right, the wording there is perhaps could be misconstrued. I think that would be a simple edit.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Focus area place-making, continue to promote downtown Westminster and Westminster Station. I guess those are our only two focus areas, really, because it seemed, or are there other focus areas that we're not promoting?
We, we maintain the other focus areas, but as I talked about, we did walk back some of the land uses. We would, with this plan, keep those of the more suburban nature. And then at, when the time is right, for example, if the, the Beeline Northwest Rail Extension happens and other developments occur, then consider future land use amendments at a later time.
Okay. Yeah, it, the way it lands for me is that we're promoting, we're promoting downtown Westminster, we're promoting Westminster Station, and we're not promoting other areas. That's how it, or by, by their exclusion there. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm, I get, I get what you're saying. It just, that's the way it's landing, so I don't know if it's an, an edit thing, but that's my comment there. Infill and redevelopment, I just wrote tiny houses again, so I won't go back into that spiel. Chapter 71, Community Design and Built Form. I don't know, that 880 paradigm seems like a platitude to me. Everything we do in public space is great for an eight-year-old and great for an 80-year-old? Well, I, I agree with that includes, with including that, but also, you know, eight years old, you're a few years out of diapers. And 80 years old, you're a few years out of diapers. It, I don't know that we, it just seems like very plutinous to me and not really, doesn't really mean anything. I mean, maybe, maybe it would be better to have more family-oriented or, I don't know, something, you know, it just, I just don't, I don't know. It just, it just landed kind of weird to me. So. Page 90, we talk about the relevant plans, goals, and policies, the Harris Park Community Vision Plan. And I remember when that came through, and we had a lot of pushback from the residents of historic Westminster on the Harris Park Plan. I don't know if that's really been implemented or not, or, but it doesn't seem like that was something the community was supporting that much. Do you have a different recollection of that? Because you look really confused.
Well, council approved it. So we, we respect it as council-approved.
All right. Well, I just wanted, that was just my memory of our hearing.
There was not, you're correct, there was not unanimity in the opinions. But yeah, council did approve it in October 25th, 2021.
All right. Well. Next, next page, under housing diversity, the rental housing inspection program. I guess my, my first question is the program working, but then the second, it seems specific, does that really need to be in the comprehensive plan as a, as its own bullet point or is that, or what is the intent there?
Sure, good question. So it's not included in the, the goal and policy statements. It's, it's a sidebar, the rental housing inspections, just like the eight eighty is a sidebar. This is informational, or we thought if people were, had come across the information, if there was, you know, a desire to understand what this is, but.
All right. Sounds good. Westminster Station. Yeah. Been talking about that offline. That's the same basic point I had before. Church Ranch focus area, page hundred and one. We talk about Circle Point being one of the premier office developments in Westminster. Which may be true, but is that paragraph still accurate now that we're building out the rest of Circle Point with apartments?
There is still additional, sort of a northwest, if you think of it as four parts, the Northwest Quadrant would still, still has land capacity that is preserved for employment.
Okay, well, all right. I've got a couple of questions, a couple of areas in the same area. Now, page hundred and two, that's the, that's going to be our Highway thirty-six and Church Ranch area. We've got the map, but we saw about which shows, I believe, part of the Han property, but isn't part of that the water treatment, the new water treatment plant that council just approved money to eminent domain more of? And so is that, so how much of what is shown in red is the Han property for, that they were asking for a land use change versus the, versus the city purchasing it for water treatment?
It's, it's approximately sixty-six acres. The north end would remain in private ownership and then roughly forty-ish acres on the south end would be the city's treatment.
Okay. So does it make sense for us to show that whole area as office employment when, when the, the South Third is going to be water treatment?
That's a good point. Yeah, and this, this isn't a substitute for the land use map, which does bifurcate that in, in chapter three. This is more conceptual. We also wanted to preserve the office employment intent. Which we think the treatment plant is, is compatible as opposed to a residential use. You know, should the treatment plant end up not, you know, occurring, this would preserve that intent.
Okay, so as opposed to changing it to a public quasi-public?
Which, which the land use diagram does show in chapter three, so map three, two.
All right. Brook Hill focus area, we've, that's, I, the one thing I, I see is we're extending Vance Street. It looks like it's going right through Home Depot. So I'm not sure. I assume this is a long-term a, some long-term potential vision in case that ever got torn down and redeveloped.
Right.
All right. I mean, as much as I'd love to give my, my lumber drive-through, I get it. One thing I, one thing I didn't like on page hundred and four. Expansion of additional retail uses outside of this, existing retail properties along Wondertainment Boulevard and West Eighty-Eighth Avenue is strongly discouraged in order to focus, focus retail and entertainment opportunities in Brook Hill and establish centers. That's just mission comments. I get probably why you're put that in there, but but I, I don't know. I, I guess that I have a problem. I don't know. I, I don't like limiting people's land use. I don't know how much, how much land that there really is that's not already commercial or residential that's, so maybe a moot point, but it's, I don't know, it, it kind of lands wrong and it, it, we're trying, I, I know we want to refill our shopping centers too, but they may, there may be areas that aren't appropriate or, you know, you know, you know, audio, we know audio-oriented uses are still discouraged in certain focus areas and stuff like that too. So that might be an opportunity for somebody and.
Well, you have me wondering if we even need that statement at all, since the boundaries of the focus, of the focus area are pretty tight and it's all retail already.
Yeah.
So that, that whole sentence perhaps could be pulled, pulled out.
I think that would be, that would be my recommendation, please. The next one on the Westminster Heights transition area. We have a nice little info blurb on the side called about the agrahood, but isn't that the, where the zones is going to go and there's not really, so there really isn't that opportunity or am I, is there, are there other undeveloped areas that will not, that where this quote-unquote agrahood neighborhood could happen?
It, it's certainly possible. There's surplus land all around the St. Anthony campus and if that is evolved into some sort of healthy, living-oriented environment, which some of the comparisons have been, there, there could be an opportunity for that type of community garden or something like that.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. We're getting close, everybody. I promise. Next, over into our Westmore and Vicinity Employment Area. We, page hundred nine, hundred ten, we talk about the, the connections to the adjacent four hundred and twenty acre Westminster Hills Off Leash Dog Park and Network of Trails is a potential amenity for Westmore. And then on our graphic, on figure eight, ten there, on page one hundred and ten. We don't really show any sort of connection downs, down Sims from the Walnut Creek Trail or even the trail, the existing trail from the Walnut Creek Trail up past west, up, that should be Westmore Circle and Westmore Drive, not Westminster Circle and Westminster Drive. I just noticed that. But from Westmore down to Hundred Eighth, there is, there is no connection over that creek and we, I think we, I think this graphic could be updated to show that is an additional additional potential bike pedestrian connection over there because again, if that, you know, granted, I live in that area. I know there are probably other areas in the city that have similar issues with connectivity like that, but that's, you know, I'm watching, I watch elderly people walking along Sims Avenue trying to get from west, from countryside up to the Westmore, the Walnut Creek Trail there and stuff like that all the time and that, you know, you know, I'm, I'm still pretty agile. My dog's agile, but I don't know that, I think it's an accident waiting to happen. So I, if we, if it at least shows up in the plan, then there's a possibility that something will happen in the future. All right, page one sixteen. Oh yeah, that was the, that's our plan implementation and our biannual reports. I was, I'm really happy to see that because I was going to ask, were we supposed to be doing that all along? So hearing that this is a new review process, I really, I really appreciate that. Performance monitoring, I was really, that was kind of an interesting section. So page one hundred and twenty-three. And this might be a utilities question. Again, we're saying our baseline water usage per capita is a hundred twenty-six gallons per capita per day. And you know, that, that seems high because usually, you know, a hundred twenty is, in my, my experience has been kind of has been conservative and a hundred ten, I've seen it go down to a hundred ten or even a hundred, depending on the mixes there. So is, what is that one twenty-six gallons per capita per day based on?
It's the shortages, that's the information I got from our, our partners, but I do know with all things water, as I mentioned earlier, the city, the city plans very conservatively. So we assume people use, you know, quite a bit in our planning. So, you know, with the, with the target being to decrease that over time.
Sure. And the utility condition index, UCI at a forty-one point five. What is that, what does that represent? What does that mean?
It's a great question. I don't know what that means, but I understand we want to at least keep that or increase that in a move.
That makes sense. I just would like.
It's some sort of.
I mean, is that, are we forty, is that forty-one percent good? Is, I mean, are, are we out of a fifth, scale of fifty? What is, I mean, I don't know what forty-one point five units are. Sorry. Okay.
Forty-one out of a hundred, not a percentage of.
And the, okay, so forty, so we would want to be increasing that then probably because if it's out of a hundred, you want, I don't know. So I can't look at that as an F, like in a seventy is a C. Or whatever, like that.
Yeah, so I wouldn't take it in terms of like the infrastructure is working for us staying.
Yeah.
Water being breaks per thousand feet. So it's doing what it needs to, it's just not random, a brand-new infrastructure. Forty-one, doing what it.
Okay, that, thank you for the clarification. That, I'll get more in the weeds later because I'm, I'm curious, but that's, I, that's good for now. All right, on page one hundred twenty-four, we're transportation and mobility. Again, we talk about, we talk about our drive-alone motor split and we say reduce. Which, which I get, however, that's, reduce isn't really an option. It just seems like that should be, I mean, I guess it is an option if we just blew up all the roads and forced everyone to transit, but it's not really. Until our in-migration stops till, and our population starts to decline, reducing isn't really going to happen. So I would say at least maintain there or maintain versus reducing as a goal there. And I get our miles of bike lanes buffered and shared lanes. We want to increase those. My comment would be just, you know, without, without reducing our, the, the, the general purpose traffic lanes either because I, you know, or at least without lowering the level of service when you're doing that. So, so comments there's. I'm down to my last comment. This is great. Back to the Church Ranch vicinity area, this is going to, this is in the appendix. This is appendix page fifteen. What is this? The annexation analysis when we're, so we're talking about the annexation potential within the greater boundaries of Westminster, our little enclaves that we have of unincorporated land. So, you know, one, one thing that kind of bugged me a little bit, we talked about under land use, we say the Jefferson County's North Plains Plan identifies a number of uses within these zoning categories that are discouraged or prohibited. For example, non-residential uses that may result in nuisances. And then under community service, we have annexations of sites within this area could potentially have significant impact on municipal code enforcement due to the number of existing developed uses not in compliance with city ordinances and varying levels of maintenance and upkeep. Well. Yeah, and, and I know that there was, we had, there was a landowner who's now developed his land, but he had wanted to move his office building to another land and he'd had more of a rural area that had paved or that was, you know, used gravel driveways and stuff like that. And the city basically made, wouldn't allow him to do it because they wanted to make, have the new place be up to our current standards and stuff like that. And not allow him gravel parking lot, for example, and stuff like that. So he ended up just tearing the place down instead. I'm, I guess my, my thought is, you know, unpaved surfaces aren't necessarily a nuisance in my view. And maybe, I don't know if that's a, that's a code issue or a, or a municipal ordinance issue. But that would be, that was, that was just something that kind of, it just landed wrong when I read it.
And, and I'll just clarify that this whole section is, is kind of a discussion of considerations. It's neither recommending to annex or not annex. It's just kind of, these are the things that we should be mindful of.
Okay, well. That was, all right, well, we got through my entire list of comments there. So that, so appreciate all of your candid answers on that. And now this may be a, oh, we have two potential amendments to the land use that we could or could not move forward with tonight. So one for the Han property and one for the Northgate property, I think you said. I didn't see any presentation regarding the Northgate property, although you mentioned it in yours.
Yeah, I kind of thought they'd be here tonight.
But I guess, you know, so, bearing on the comprehensive land use plan, it, it felt like we're a little bit hijacked into, into a land use hearing that was quasi-judicial versus our legislative role tonight. That said, even if we pass the, or recommend passing this without including those, they could still go through the traditional land, land use change process, correct?
Yes, yeah, that would be an option. And then, you know, as I mentioned earlier, then we'd have the benefit of, you know, a focused discussion on a specific site and we'd have a, you know, companion zoning and PDP and you could kind of see where things fall in the land and the surrounding residents would have the opportunity to participate.
Yeah. Okay. All right, that, appreciate that. I've, I am done for now. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair McConnell, if I may.
Yes.
So that was a lot. Which is great, but please keep in mind that the Planning Commission is going to make a recommendation to the City Council on this comprehensive plan and it's sort of three different possibilities. One is as presented, as presented by staff. As presented by staff with some changes, recommend changes, not amendments, not actual changes, but you can recommend changes. The other one is to vote it down entirely. Commissioner Carpenter made a number of suggestions and I think I, I saw Mr. Spurgeon writing furiously. I can't type that fast, so I don't know that I got them all. If the commission intends to entertain some of those possible changes, for example, Mr. Spurgeon mentioned striking out an entire sentence at one point, striking out, oh, what was it? Unincorporated in another point. My question is, do you feel, Andrew, that you've got all of the potential changes and because my question is, for the commission to be able to recommend approving this comprehensive plan to the City Council, if there, if the commission wants to recommend changes, we need to know exactly what those are. So as we continue through this, if there are more suggestions and, and then everybody needs to keep those changes in mind. And maybe at the end, we can have that conversation after everybody's had the opportunity to comment and ask questions. And I'm sorry, Andrew, you were ready to speak and I cut you off.
I, I think you kind of addressed it, but yeah, I, I was taking notes. Of course, we also have the benefit of the record.
I, I think you kind of addressed it, but yeah, I, I was taking notes. Of course, we also have the benefit of the recording to uh, double check those. But I guess I was thinking if we, you know, we, we got through the commissioner question and comments, um, and then we could take a vote, uh, if, if the commission wished to incorporate uh, the suggestions from Commissioner Carpenter and then, or any other potential amendments, uh, that the commission might propose.
So my suggestion would be once, um, the commission has satisfied themselves and asked all their questions and gotten all their answers, made their suggestions that we read back those comments. So that, because if you're making recommendations, you're going to have to identify them specifically. Um, unless you just want to say, we like what Carpenter said, so we'll just go with all of those. Um, otherwise you're gonna, you're gonna need to identify those specifically. So we're gonna need to have that conversation while we're in the voting process. Does that make sense? Okay. We'll revisit this one. Everybody has had the opportunity to ask their questions.
Okay. Thank you for your input, Mr. Graham. Okay. Anyone else have questions or comments? Commissioner Tomacek?
Andrew, uh, in section four, when was the last time the group preparing this talked to RTD?
I'm sorry, in section four.
Uh, it's on transportation and multimodal and all that sort of thing. Um, when was the last time anyone spoke to RTD?
December.
And, um, have they indicated that they're going to improve, uh, service up this part of the world? The, the only reason I ask is, I looked at the route maps that you've got in here versus the route maps that they are showing currently on their website. They've actually reduced the number of routes just in the last couple of months.
Yeah, we, we. And, and I'm wondering. That actually was the conversation we had with RTD.
Okay.
Um, but we decided that would be cleanest, um, just to incorporate the maps from the transportation mobility plan since there was, you know, a whole stakeholder group that informed that and where transit was desired, you know, looking into the future. Uh, and whether that's RTD or some other service provider.
I'm just concerned that the, the trend even bef- since before COVID is that they're putting fewer and fewer buses up this part of the world. And the, and even the train routes have obviously not gone the way that we wanted. That the whole intent of going to multimodal transport and live work and, and walkable neighborhoods and so on that are intrinsic to this whole thing uh, very quickly fall apart if RTD continues the trend they're on. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomacek. Anyone else? Commissioner Colling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, can you do me a favor and go to the slide that outlined the Han and Northgate, the slide that you showed us earlier today? So staff is supporting the Northgate change. Is that what you had said?
Yes.
And not the Han change?
At this time, correct.
Can you walk us through why? A little bit more. Is it just water based or is there more to it?
No, there's, there's several considerations. Uh, and of course we'll have, you know, this conversation with City Council as well. Uh, the Han site, um, is, uh, larger. Um, it's at a location, um, adjacent to US thirty six with, with great visibility that we think lends itself to the employment flex land use as an economic development opportunity. And it, it did in doing so have one of the largest water decreases in the entire city. The Northgate site is, uh, smaller. Uh, we don't think it lends itself to something any, but a residential, uh, use. And the, the changes requested are site specific. Uh, the changes to the Han property with the text changes would potentially um, apply to any office. The employment office institutional campus site. So Circle Point over here at Sheridan Park. North High twenty five area, anywhere else where they have that land use that would potentially open it up, uh, to the, uh, CRC use that they described. I think John wants to say something.
I was just gonna add, and maybe Andrew can go to one of the first slides where I think we outlined the objectives that the City Council gave us back in December. And there were some specific goals that they wanted to accomplish in this, um, in this latest revision. Yes, and here's the slide. Uh, they want us to focus on the vacant sites, identify areas for flexible employment, as you see here. Opportunities for homeownership, uh, reduce the expect, expect water demand, demand. And, uh, of course, you know, modify the document to make it smaller. But these were, um, the, the sort of parameters that we were, we were asked to review. And so when we review the two requests that you've, uh, that Andrew outlined on, on that other slide we were looking at, uh, we feel that the requests in the Northgate proposal largely fit within the council's stated objectives that they gave us. Whereas we don't generally feel that way about the Han site for reasons that Andrew articulated. Uh, but I just wanted to add that, that our analysis was really in the framework that the council gave us uh, when, when they instructed us to revise the draft to the extent that it is today.
Okay, and so if I'm understanding correctly, even though staff is not recommending a change to the comprehensive plan to allow the Han property to go back to a mixed use versus what it is identified now as more of a, um, office, employment, land use, right? Um, that doesn't mean that they can't move forward with their application through the process, but they would have to get an amendment to the comp plan because it would now not be consistent with the comp plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. And even under our existing comprehensive plan, um, the mixed use center in, in the twenty thirteen plan does not allow senior housing. So they'd be in that situation. Even under our.
Current, under the current land use. I see. Okay. And I, the reason I'm bringing it up because, I mean, I think the CCRC sounds like a great addition to the city and it has a lot of items in there that checkboxes that I think are the goals of the, of Westminster. So, um, I don't want to discourage that. I would like to encourage that, um, land use to advance. Um, but it sounds like they would just have a few more hoops to go through. If I'm understanding that correctly.
And I would add that they would be critical hoops. They would offer the opportunity for the staff to do a proper analysis of everything from transportation, infrastructure, resources through a development review process, as well as afford the community most affected, uh, to an opportunity to voice their opinions uh, through our notification requirements, uh, that we employ dur- during those development review processes. So, uh, uh, we, we feel it would be the appropriate way of approaching a project of this scale.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, so some of the things that they talked about were about reduced water usage, employment opportunities. All of that, they would be able to present as part of that application and work with the community to convince them that that's the better land use or that application, right? So all of that would be something that they would get an opportunity to share more because it sounds like a lot of those reduced water employment opportunities are there in the plan that they're proposing. But it sounds like the CCRC is a unique land use that kind of, is it mixed between mixed use and office employment. It's kind of very unique. And you don't really have a category that fits into right now. Is that correct?
That's, I think that's correct. That's, that's kind of where we've struggled. They've, they've presented some really, um, you know, intriguing concepts. And I, I think many of us are dealing with aging family members and, and thinking about, you know, what, what's the right place in the community. But as it is a interesting concept, uh, and particularly at the scale, we, we have, you know, some smaller senior housing developments. Uh, we have, you know, there's one up the streets, a hundred and thirty seven units. We don't have anything of the, in the, in the realm of fifteen hundred units. And so therefore, when we present the water supply assumptions, you know, that's an audit of thirty three thousand accounts. And we've sorted those by our comprehensive plan, land uses. Well, we don't have a history with something like this. So it's hard for us to really know where it would fall in that. So we're going to, again, estimate conservatively. If, if, if the proposal is, is a certain amount of, of density, then we're gonna, you know, use our other accounts that demonstrate that kind of history when we make assumptions.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
I'm almost afraid to say it. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to follow up on Commissioner Colling's question there. Uh, can you go back to the slide with the proposal, please? Yes. So the Han property, the current plan, no, wait. So revised twenty twenty three plan where it's employment flex, that is the city's recommendation for the land use. They're requesting employment office institutional campus with text amendments to allow housing. We don't have those text amendments. So we only have, so we really, we would only, the only thing we could really do right now is go from employment flex to employment office institutional campus, which, but with either way, they would still have to come back with whatever the specific text amendments are.
Their, their proposed amendments are included in attachment twelve.
Attachment twelve. All right, let me go back to attachment twelve.
They included specific text amendments that would apply to let that land use category citywide if adopted. Uh, but those specific text amendments were intended to facilitate the, uh, intended development.
Sorry, I'm trying to find there.
I have. It would be near the end.
Well.
Are they using Chrome? Cause there's the, they can use the navigator.
Oh. No, this would be Han.
Four eighty nine is.
Okay.
For, so, so they've proposed amendments and, you know, the, the, the commission, if, if you so choose, you could support their requests, uh, or you could leave it out.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, because without is, you know, without actually having that in front of me, I can't even answer. There's a, it's a long.
Cause the representative is available to, uh, identify what page numbers, uh, and I guess to the extent the Planning Commission would allow them to maybe explain the text amendments.
Hello again.
So, hold on just for a minute. So we close the public portion of the hearing. Is this?
This is an opportunity for the commission to ask questions. So it's.
Okay, all right, Bernie, just, just double checking. Thank you. My apologies.
Okay. Yeah, four ninety two, it looks like. Okay.
What we looked at doing that we took, uh, working with, um, Andrew, you know, we looked at the employment office. Which really going in that those cabinets. Assist living, memory care, skilled nurse. It all fits in really, um, as you read through there, you can see where it talks about all of this. And then where we amended it, basically bringing that CCRC use, uh, to sort of bolster some of the things that are already in that language. The language that isn't underlined. So you can see there's just a CRC, CCRC piece that we're bringing into it. And, um, you know, basically that brings us.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, in, in general, yes.
One thing that we have gone back to.
Okay, so what, what is underlying is the recommended changes that we, that we may or may not consider. Okay, that's, all right, that, that's helpful. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. So I have a thing going on with my microphone here, then wherever I turn it on or off, it turns on the, it's playing through my computer screen. I am hearing voices. Just happens to be my own. Okay, so I have a couple of comments, um, real quick. And then I, I think what, um, Mr. Graham, what you would recommend earlier, going back through, uh, the list the Commissioner Carpenter presented, we probably should do that and take a look at, at each of those items. But thi- this actually covers a couple of them and opinion only. So vision zero is, that is not an unusual goal in almost any industry. Right? I, I can give you a handful of examples from Children's Hospital Colorado about zero infections and zero needle sticks and so on and so on and so on. Have they ever reached zero? Probably not. Or have a background in mining, right? OSHA, what's, what's your goal, Mr. McConnell? Let your mine zero lost time accidents. Did you ever get there? No, not quite. So I, I look at the vision zero as very much the same thing. It's an almost impossible goal to achieve, but it helps emphasize the importance of reaching that goal at some point in time. Um, the other was the eight eighty paradigm. And I looked at differently than I think you did because that to me, it, to me, it, it, um, made me imagine of a scale from the ages of eight to eighty and how this is a community and it, it needs everyone in between the eight and the eighty to take care of those on the end. So I wasn't, I wasn't troubled by that. Now, page one oh four, you, you did a heck of a lot of work, by the way. So it talked about, I think we might have resolved this already strongly discouraging the, the, because of the boundary of where it is, it's, it's kind of come out to be a non-issue. But I did have, and this is for Public Works Department, I'm still very blurry on what UCI actually is. Right? I get it's an index of, but what, what's compiled in the index? What all is there? I was watching you all.
Um, so UCI takes a few things into account. Good portion of it is just the age of the. And then in addition to that, it includes, uh, information, oh, water main breaks again, things like water main breaks. That's the thing. I think it's probably a good thing to be aware of. Uh, we're aware of it just from our overall. Not something that we really regularly look at. Overall planning decisions unless we've got some specific concern. I hope that answers your question.
Sure. No, I, I think I get it, but thank you very much. Appreciate that. And Andrew, the, the last question I have is for you earlier today in the public testimony. We had a question about, uh, forty percent open space, golf course and parks. And there's a, there's a couple of, of, um, charts in the, the comprehensive plan, I think, that, that demonstrate what, what those percentages exactly are, exactly are. And more importantly, that includes all of the land in, in city limits of Westminster, correct?
Uh, correct. Yeah, these are, uh, and this was some math we recalculated for when we were here in twenty twenty one. So this, this is within the existing city limits today. So not taking into account those annexation areas. Um, so the forty percent, um, is parks, golf courses and open space. Um, and more specifically, the open space is. And more specifically, the open space is, trying to find the pie chart you just mentioned, it's on page 40. The open space would be 21% of that, and then parks and golf courses are the remaining 19% to get to the 40%. We will be, as alluded to in the pre-meeting, we'll, we'll be bringing forward to you some annexations at the next meeting, and those are all open space properties. There's five of them, John?
All right. So at this point, you want to call for a vote? So, or, well, call for motion, I apologize. Motion can be either approve the plan as presented by staff, approve the plan with some suggested changes. I shouldn't say approve, recommend, recommend the plan as presented by staff, recommend the plan with some proposed or recommended changes, which we would have to identify, or the motion could be to deny the plan, or recommend denial of the plan. It's all about recommendations.
Okay. So regardless of what the recommendation would be, it'd be probably next at point in time, we would want to go through the list. Well, if it was, go ahead.
Only, only if, only if the recommendation is to approve the plan with, with some suggested changes from the commission.
Okay, all right.
Then you, then you would need to go through those recommendations and decide which ones. And unfortunately, I think you'll have to vote on every single one of them. Don't worry, there weren't actually that many changes.
Yeah, I, I took the liberty of Commissioner Carpenter of, of the ones that are actual edits versus there were somewhere you were kind of stating your opinion, or, or making a comment, so. The ones that are actual edits, there's, looks like there's about eight or nine of those.
Commissioner Colling, you have a comment?
Thank you, I do have a comment. Andrew, a question I have is on my document, it stops on page 20 and picks up back on page 36. And I don't know if there's missing pages, or if I'm just missing pages, but I noticed that the PDF online shows the same thing. So I'm not sure if there's pages missing. So like 20 is the end of chapter two, and then chapter three starts, and the first page is 36. I just caught it, sorry, I would have said something sooner, I didn't mean.
It looks like the, the other pagination is wrong. We moved, chapter eight became chapter two, and so everything got kind of thrown off. It looks like the, the pages got thrown off, but yeah, there was, council had a specific request, put water up front, is what we were told, so we moved that chapter, but in doing so, it looks like, yeah, we goofed up the numbering, the content.
Not a big deal, just remember, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something I was missing, that I didn't review.
No, I give you credit, you caught something that I overlooked, so, thank you.
I believe we're going to have to, like, identify that and vote on every single page that we've changed? I'm just teasing.
Deputy City Attorney Graham, is it not possible to read off the amendments and they could vote on it as a group? I read off, you know, this page, this page.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so if, if you're, if you think you have a handle on what those suggestions are, identify the suggestion, the change, where it is, and then the commission can vote on that, but first we need, we would need a motion to recommend approval to, or, sorry, recommend the plan to the city council with changes that will be made to the plan, or recommended changes to the plan. Does that make sense?
Go ahead and do that. Well, I'm going to take a shot at this.
You're taking a shot at a motion?
I'll take a shot at the motion.
Okay, please proceed.
All right. All right. I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve an ordinance adopting the 2040 comprehensive plan as presented tonight with the following change. All right. Well, I need to finish, I need to read all the changes.
No, you need, well, no, I would, I would suggest you get a second for that, and then we talk about the changes, you vote on them individually, they're either up or down votes, and then you have a final vote on, on the final recommendation.
Okay, then just with changes, period.
Right, with the changes of. Something to that effect.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Tomacek. Jennifer, may we have a vote, please?
We, before we vote, we need to have those changes entered into the record.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, getting excited.
Well, we'll, we'll have Andrew read them, please. And so this will be the first change, and then the commission can discuss and vote on that change.
So the first one I noted is on page 12. This would be adding reduce, reducing congestion to the sentence describing ways air quality may be enhanced through multiple techniques, so adding, reducing vehicular congestion to that statement at the top of page 12.
I support that change. Is that what I said?
Yeah, let's, let's get a motion to make that change.
I'd like to make a motion to make that change, please.
Have a second.
Jennifer, we, we're good to vote, or we have, we actually, we have some discussion, yes?
Once we have, we have a second, then we'll have the discussion. Okay.
I'll second it. Okay, discussion on the proposed change. Seeing no discussion, Jennifer, may we have the vote, please?
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
The, the vote is complete, and the suggested for the changes passed unanimously.
The second one I have noted, I, I guess I might ask Deputy City Attorney, correcting the symbol for Colorado State Highway 128, is that just a Scrivener's error, just like the pagination? We can just.
Yeah, that's a Scrivener's change, so we don't need to vote on that.
Well, one less. The next one I have noted then is on page 64. 64, in Policy 10.6, to strike out the words for unincorporated areas, that would leave the sentence reading, work with Adams County and/or Highland Hills Park and Rec District to identify potential park and recreation sites south of 92nd Avenue.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that change.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second on the proposed change. Jennifer, may we have the vote, please? Or is there any discussion first? Okay.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
The vote is complete, and the suggested change passes unanimously.
The next I noted is on page 68, within Goal TM 3, Policy 3.3, to remove the last six words of that statement, the Vision Zero Plans, Goals, and Initiatives, so that would leave the statement to re-coordinate within the city and other agencies to reduce and eliminate traffic deaths and severe injuries across all modes as identified in the TMP, which is the Transportation Mobility Plan. That would just defer that policy discussion to our adopted Transportation Mobility Plan.
May I have a motion, please?
I move we do that.
Do we have a second for the we should do that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tomacek. Comments, discussion?
I'm with the, with Vice Chairman McConnell on this one. I like the idea of Vision Zero plans, so I'll be voting against this change.
Anyone else? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, this is, we're just deferring the policy from the comprehensive plan to the Transportation Mobility Plan. That's the, that's really what we're voting on here, not, not on the pros and cons of, of reducing and eliminating traffic deaths, which is remaining in here, and is all, you know, it's just ruining the Vision Zero verbiage.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. So, I'm, would still vote no against this, because I, I think what I'm hearing is, if it, if it stays in, no big deal. If it's cut out, well, all we've done is move it to the Transportation Mobility Plan. And because we have a crossover between so many of our documents, I don't, I don't see any harm in leaving it in, as is. Any additional comments? Jennifer, may I have the vote, please?
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
The vote is complete, and the change passes. Next, Andrew.
Next, I have the next page, page 69, under Goal TM-6, Policy 6.1. And Commissioner Carpenter, if I understood this one correctly, it would be to expand on that statement to include reducing congestion, so it would read, coordinate with other agencies such as C.R.T.D., Dr. Coggin, adjacent communities, to implement a seamless and safe multimodal transportation network and reduce congestion as identified in the TMP.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, I think I just left my, my on before, but I'll move that we reduce congestion.
Second?
Any discussion on this proposed change? Jennifer, one more time, please.
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
The vote is plead in the, complete, and the proposed change mass passes unanimously. There we go. Next item, Andrew.
On page 80, under Goal ER-1, the last policy, Policy 1.6. This would be striking the businesses and, so it would leave the sentence or the policy to read, encourage business programs focused on renewable energy, water conservation, clean technology, waste reduction, and recycling in accordance with the sustainability plan policies, and where consistent with the city's industry and employment composition.
Let's read what the proposed change would be one more time.
Sure, it would be striking out businesses and, that second and third words, so it would leave, encourage business programs focused on renewable energy, water conservation, clean technology, waste reduction, and recycling in accordance with the sustainability plan policies, and where consistent with the city's industry and employment composition.
Thank you for indulging me, Andrew. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to strike that as described.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tomacek. Any discussion?
What's the reason again we're striking that?
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, the, because we, because we're, this is talking about goals and policies of employment, and it sounds like we're encouraging businesses specifically there, and we should be encouraging all types of businesses. That's, that's why. So by removing businesses and encouraging the business programs focused on that, that's all, all good stuff that's in the sustainability plan versus trying, you know, encouraging specific types of businesses to locate the West.
And staff's position is we, we believe that was the intent, so it was perhaps not written as well as it could have been.
Thank you, Andrew. Any more discussion? Thank you. Jennifer, next vote, please.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Vote is complete and unanimous, passes. Onto the next one, Andrew.
Sure, on page 104, this is the one that came up a couple of times now. Deleting the first full sentence that's on that page, expansion of additional retail uses outside of existing retail properties along Wadsworth Boulevard and West 88th Avenue is strongly discouraged in order to focus retail and entertainment opportunities in Brooklyn, one established centers such as Mission Commons. Just striking that whole sentence, which is probably not necessary given the geographic boundaries of that focus area.
Commissioner Colling?
I'd like to make a motion to make the change as described.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo. Comments, discuss? Okay, Jennifer, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Vote is complete and unanimous, the change passes as proposed.
Next, I have page 110, in regard to the Westmore and vicinity employment area. Scrivener's error we would correct would be to make sure the street names on the graphic are correct. Westmore, it's at the Westminster, but the substantive change would be to indicate both a potential connection across the creek there, and to show connectivity south along Sims to better correspond with the text in regard to the connection to the open space dog park.
So, there's three, three changes to here, basically? Well, two name changes, right, which.
Yeah, I think we can just do those.
We do it in one? Okay, thank you. Have a motion, please.
Yeah, I, I move we add the potential bike pedestrian network connection from Westminster, or I'm sorry, Westmore Drive down Sim Street to the south, across the creek.
I second that.
And you, you had the second, Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Any additional discussion? Okay, Jennifer, call the bulk vote, please.
Commissioner Mayo?
Whoops, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yep.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Vote is complete and unanimous, the proposed change is passed. Andrew?
Going to page 124, which is our proposed indicators. There were two identified by Commissioner Carpenter, the first being, the second one, in that sort of purple error, the transportation mobility header, that second item, drive alone modal split. The target identified in the current draft is reduce. Just perhaps a little bit of explanation, modal split is a little jargony. So if you think of that as a pie chart demonstrating the different ways that people travel in their car versus in transit versus bike, it's. versus bike, et cetera, so this, the goal would be to reduce the size of the pie that is the drive alone portion of the modal split. That's what's in the current draft before you. I believe the suggestion from Commissioner Carpenter was to change the reduce to maintain.
Is that correct, Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes, that was the, the intention. I, I don't want the policy to be reducing that split necessarily. I think maintaining is more likely to be what happens as well as the policy I would prefer to see in the, in the plan.
Okay, and, and this change is specific to the target column, right?
Right.
Okay, thanks. Have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to accept that change.
Thank you Commissioner Tomacek, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? Jennifer, call the vote, please.
I have a discussion.
Whoops, snuck on when I looked the other way. Go ahead, Commissioner Colling, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think that actually reducing it is an ideal goal, that we should try to aim to reduce that. I think that we may maintain it, or maybe what it is, but I still think it's a stretch goal to try to reduce it, so I will be voting no on this.
What is, what's staff's view on this, Andrew?
So this was, this is again, thinking about what's in our Transportation Mobility Plan, and so, you know, the, the desire of that plan is to continue to provide all types of transportation options, but to beef up the opportunities for public transportation, bicycling, pedestrian activity, and those sort of things. And so, you know, over time, you would see those other, which are just very small slices of the pie, perhaps increase, and the drive alone portion of the pie would, would decrease over time.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional comment? Jennifer, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Carpenter? Oh, I threw you off, didn't I? I didn't mean to, I just said it, sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
No.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Okay, vote is complete and the proposed change passes. Next up, Andrew.
All right, for those of you tracking along in the document, don't change the page. We're just going to go down two rows. The, the indicator that calls out miles of bike lanes, comma buffered bike lanes or shared bike lanes. The target is increase, and I believe the request from Commissioner Carpenter was, if I understood correctly, was to increase without reducing vehicular level of service.
Have a motion?
I move that we don't reduce vehi- vehi- vehicular levels of service, yes.
I'll second that. Okay, additional comment or question?
From a comment standpoint, I don't want to see us reducing the traffic lanes until such time that other modal means transportation is available. I don't see too much thought going to getting rid of cars. Cars aren't going anywhere, so we need just to move forward.
Thank you Commissioner Mayo. Commissioner Colling?
I, I agree that we shouldn't reduce the number of traffic lanes until it's warranted, and I think over time it may be warranted. And so I would agree that you wouldn't sacrifice traffic for lanes until it's warranted. So I would agree with this motion.
Thank you. And personally, I don't think I've seen an increase, what I would call a corresponding increase in bike usage as we've added bike lanes and reduced some of the traffic lanes that we have, so I'd be in favor of keeping it as is as well.
If, if I may offer staff's perspective?
You may.
Okay, so just to be clear, these are, these are indicators on things we would measure, and we'd come back in those biennial reports. So these are not policy statements, these are, what's the city going to be tracking over time? And one of the things we, we think about is what, what is trackable over time? What, what are metrics that we can actually keep track of and be able to readily report on? The number of miles of bike lanes and how that ostensibly will increase over time, that's very easy to track. Correlating where bike lanes increase with vehicular levels of service, I'm not sure that's something we have the tools in-house to track over time. I'm not, I'm not objecting, we can still make this change, I'm just saying it could be difficult for us to track that over time.
Commissioner Mayo, go ahead.
But I think when the time comes that there's too many bicycles and the bike lanes are too congested, then we can look at increasing bike lanes. I don't see us getting there for a long time.
One more time for my own edification, could we read the proposed change as it would be?
Sure, so the target value for the row of describing miles of bike lanes, buffered bike lanes or shared lanes, the proposal would be to change where it says increase to increase without reducing vehicular level of service.
Okay, got it, thank you. Any other comments? Jennifer, time for a vote.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
No.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Tomacek?
No.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
I believe the motion passes 4-3. The change as proposed is accepted. Got another one for me?
That's the last one I have noted. I, I believe the other ones were the commissioner identifying some opinions or observations that he wanted to note. So that was the last one. He's shaking his-
Agreed. Yes, that, yeah, you, you got all the, we went through all the major ones that I had. And we've, and I think now it's time to take into consideration those other two changes-
The two requests.
The two requests, so. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, I, I move that he accept the land use change of the Northgate property from the residential low density as presented in the plan to the residential medium density for 26.9 acres and commercial for one acre.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that, please.
Thank you Commissioner Colling. Discussion, comments? No feedback? Okay, Jennifer, vote, please.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Vote is complete and the motion passes. Commissioner Carpenter, one more time?
This one's difficult, but but I'm going to make a motion for the sake of discussion. So, I move that we yeah, I'm sorry.
In reference to the, the text amendments, of course, this, this table is kind of simplifying unless you, you could make it as, you know, as, as referred to in Attachment 12, so.
All right, I move that we reclassify the land use for the Han property from Employment Flex to Employment Office Institutional Campus with the text amendments to allow housing.
Do I have a second?
Point of, oh, location?
I'm sorry?
If you could mention the attachment-
Attachment, Attachment 12 for the text amendment, yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
I will second.
Thank you, sir. Comment and discussion? Commissioner Mayo?
Yeah, I would like to see the the acreage limitation that was discussed earlier, to make sure that these changes don't inadvertently muddy up other things that's going on around the city, and only applies to this property.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I would accept that as a friendly amendment for, for a 50-acre limitation.
Andrew?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to remind the commission, yeah, that was, you know, the applicant's representative came forward and proposed, you know, a minute, 50-acre minimum size for these amendments, so.
Okay, Commissioner Colling?
So just so I understand, Andrew, that means that this is the only property that this would be applied to, is that correct? Because there's no other properties that are 50 acres within Westminster that this could happen in, right?
Based on this current comp plan, correct, you know, potentially down the road, there was another property that was 50 acres, and someone proposed that land use and it was approved, then it could apply there. But, but based on this comprehensive plan that's before you, yes, this would really only fall on this one property.
The, the amendments that we're talking about are very specific, and the text amendments are very specific, that it's almost like we're making a decision on a specific piece of property for land use, where I don't think that's the intent of the comp plan. So my recommendation would be a denial on this. As much as I support that land use, I would like to see them come forward and do a comp plan amendment and have a land use review at the appropriate time. That would be my recommendation.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with Commissioner Colling, that this is something that should be before us with a lot more supportive information we have right now.
Anyone else? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, my, and, and I, I get that, and I'm, I'm, I'm in that same kind of quasi boat there. The one thing, the way the text amendment is written, it appears like it's changing the definition of Employment Office Institutional Campus. So, more so than anything than in the text amendments. So from that standpoint, maybe instead of changing the land use, which is the motion before us, that we, that we look at changing that definition instead, and, and then they could come to us with their specific comp plan. I don't know if that's something that people would be amenable to. That's, but anyhow, that, that's how it's landing for me, because I agree, it does seem like we're, I don't want to rush, rush into it, although from a, you know, from a utility standpoint, I, I saw their analysis, I saw the city's analysis, and we're, you know, we've got a lot of bites at this apple, assuming they come back, because they'll still have to do a PDP, they'll still have to do the ODP and everything else.
Right, and that was, that was the, the request from the applicant, just now, was just to remind the commission that there would be zoning process, PDP, so forth. But, but yeah, staff's opinion is that, that the definitions proposed, which are very helpful to help understand, this is, that's the kind of language we're more used to seeing in a PDP document, not in a comprehensive plan document.
Well, I, I feel that it, that if we approved the, the change as supported by Attachment 12, that we're, we're giving tacit approval to a project that we have not seen anything about. And it would be the first time in 20 years, sitting up here, we've done something like that. I'm not saying that the project is, it stands on its own as a bad idea, because I think it's a great idea, but I think that we should go through the processes that we're used to seeing, get the detail that we're used to seeing, and get any questions that we may have through the normal application process answered. No other comment? Jennifer, my vote, please.
Commissioner Mayo?
May I interrupt for a second? What exactly is the motion?
The, the motion on the floor is to change the land use from Employment Flex to Employment Office Institutional Campus with the text amendments to allow housing as written in Attachment 12 with a limitation on sites of 50 acres or greater.
And I've, I've seconded that. It's just been a while.
Okay, Jennifer.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
No.
Vice Chair McConnell?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
No.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
That's, so the, if I counted correctly, and I was just double checking myself, the vote is complete and the motion passes 4-3. Everybody's waiting for the next item, aren't you?
As I said, I think we're complete with all of the recommended changes, and so now it's time to vote on recommending the comprehensive plan as presented by council and as changed or recommended to be changed by the commission this evening. And if somebody just wants to say so moved, go for it.
So, so, Mr. Graham, I have a question. If there was some of those items that I don't agree with, then I would want to vote a no on the overall approval, if there was something that I didn't agree with, is that correct?
That is entirely up to Commissioner Colling, but, so just keep in mind what we are, what we're voting on here is whether to, so the commission voted to approve the changes or approve recommending those changes to the city council. Now, it's those changes with the comp plan moving forward with a recommendation from this body. If any commissioner feels that they don't want to support a recommendation to the city council with all those changes, then a no vote would be appropriate. But that is entirely up to each commissioner to, to make that decision versus the entire comp plan.
Thank you.
And if somebody did vote no for those reasons, then we could ask them on the record after the vote, the reason for their no vote?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I believe we've had the motion in the second, have we not?
I believe there was a motion, but no second.
Well-
I don't think the motion was made.
There was a motion before we, to approve the comp plan with, with changes, and that then we tabled that to, or essentially tabled that to go through the changes that we did.
Correct, you're right.
There should be a motion on the table from an hour ago.
Yes, thank you, it's been a while, as Mr. Dunn said earlier.
Okay, anybody want? Anybody want second? Okay. So in, in summary, this motion is to, we're recommending to city council to approve the comprehensive plan with the recommended changes as identified by planning commission. I got it? Okay, that was, we already got it on the floor. Andrew?
Yeah, I would, I would just say when we took the prior version of the comprehensive plan for adoption, you know, one of, one of the comments council made was, you know, they were disappointed, it was a 5-2 vote, and I think for some of them, that was a reason they didn't support the larger comprehensive plan when it, so it, so it didn't pass. So, you know, I think, I think the council is, you know, giving a lot of weight to this body and the statement you're making through the vote.
So, I don't remember back then if we submitted it to them with the, the things that we wanted changed, or we just voted 5-2 to approve.
Yeah, there were no actual amendments that came out of this body, so we, we, we presented the same plan that you all saw, and that was, with- we, we presented the same plan that you all saw, and that was, with this body and a 5-2 vote. But yeah, council to say, you know, they, 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 they were disappointed that it was 5-2, I guess they expected a 7-0.
Okay.
So they're, they're, anyway, they're looking at your vote very seriously, is I guess my point.
Okay. I'm gonna try it one more time. Jennifer, I think we can proceed with the vote.
Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Colling.
No.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Okay, the vote is complete and passes 6-1. Commissioner Colling, you were the, the no vote, would you like to make a comment or two?
I think yes, my opinion on the Han property, to be so specific about one property at this point in time in a comprehensive plan is not appropriate. Everything else I agreed with.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Colling. At long last, we've reached item number 22, and so do we have any discussion of old business? Miscellaneous business? Well, I hereby adjourn this meeting at 9:46 PM. Thank you.